To the, what is today, November 18th, school board meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Becky, can you call roll, please?
I sure can. Tatum?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
I am here. Rachel?
Here.
Jennifer?
Here.
We're all here.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bill. Do I have a second? Second by Rachel. Becky, can you call the roll?
Yes, this is item 2A approval of the agenda. Tatum?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I'm a yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones for our recognition for the evening.
And I want to invite Kelly Boards and Melinda Bunyard up front to introduce our Extra Mile Award winner. She may look familiar, Board. I think you were in her classroom last week. She had her hair put up in a bun, though, I think.
Ms. Bunyard and I are honored to introduce our November Extra Mile Award winner, Ms. Alyssa Cordell, our business innovations teacher at Lincoln Junior High. You want to come on up? Her work exemplifies one of our district's key goals, hands-on learning in every CTE classroom. And many of you were able to see that firsthand in her classroom last week on the CTE walks that you all participated in. And Ms. Bunyard and I nominated Ms. Cordell because she is making an impact at Lincoln Junior High School and not only there, but across the district with some of the work she's leading with our Make 48 curriculum, which you saw in action, and also our Elevate Career Fair. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bunyard so she can share a few of the specifics that we want to highlight that Alyssa is doing at Lincoln and again, across the district.
This is really special because Alyssa is a BHS grad, 2019, BHS softball player. And she continues to volunteer her time to coach at West, the girls' softball team. And she's also the Lincoln Junior High Girls' Cross Country Coach. So, extra mile, extra mile, extra mile is what she's doing. And we're so excited to have her in our CTE program. When I met her this summer, she was a student teacher at Grimsley last year when I got, she got such great reviews from Alexa Reynolds. And then I got to interview her and told Josh, I don't care what you do, you have to hire her. And we were right on. So she, I said last week, you can give any exciting program in the world, but unless you have a great teacher, it's not going to matter. And that's who we've got right here, is a great teacher who bravely is leading the Make 48 program, inspiring our other teachers who had a little trepidation about the program, but has built the slides, built the program, and just really doing a fantastic job with it. So Alyssa, we want to tell you that we appreciate you so much and you're doing a fabulous job. This is for you. And then, Dan?
Hi, guys. I just want to say thank you if you've congratulated me so far or recognized me. I am a first-year teacher, like we said, so it's been a lot of work, but it's been so rewarding just to see all the work that I've put in actually benefit students and other teachers across the district. So it's been really exciting. And I just love the support I've been given by Kelly and Melinda. They've helped me so much and just built me up and gave me the confidence to, you know, go out there and do what I need to do. So it's been very fun. I can't wait for what there is to come with this new class and the rest of my career. So, thank you.
I love that.
Alyssa, thank you for being.
Thank you for being a teacher leader. And I can see your proud parents. That must be your mom and dad. Thank you for joining to celebrate her tonight.
Okay, at this time, Dr. Jones, do we have any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. I will review the calendar, November 24th through the 28th. We have Thanksgiving break. That's coming up pretty quick. December 16th is our December Board of Education meeting. Then December 22nd through January 5th is winter break with no school. January 5th is a virtual teacher work day, January 19th, Martin Luther King Day. We will have no school then. And January 20th is our Board of Education meeting for January. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for the evening.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Willie. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Jeremy. Any questions or comments? Are you sure? Nothing. Hearing none, Becky, will you call for the vote, please?
This is approval of the consent agenda, item 6A. Tatum?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Emily Carlson is going to be joining us to talk to us about the Thomas Jefferson Leadership Academy. Welcome, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Faddis and members of the board and Dr. Jones. I'm Emily Carlson, principal at Thomas Jefferson Leadership Academy. Most of you guys came to visit earlier this month, so it's good to see you again. And I'm excited to share an update of where we're at partway through year one as a parent choice school. Erin, am I okay to use this? Okay. You'll see your faces up on the screen. We thought that was a great picture to encapsulate some of our student leaders. So as you know, Thomas Jefferson is focused on creating an educational environment where our students get real-time practice in living out principles such as integrity, initiative, and service, both academically and in their personal lives. We understand that sometimes leadership is an abstract concept and can be hard to articulate exactly what do you do. And we get that question a lot. And we try to help explain to families, it's not just one thing, but it's woven throughout all that we do and in every conversation and every approach, bringing it back to a leadership focus. And we feel like you do see an impact on students when you see them living their lives out with initiative, when they're showing a service mindset, when they are having integrity in all the things that they do. And that's our goal with our model, is that when you interact with our students, our staff members, that you walk away from that interaction saying, wow, that kiddo was different, or I was impressed by that, or I didn't know a student could do that. Just kind of helping to open the eyes to our community of all the things that our students are capable of and giving them those opportunities where they can take on those leadership roles and just grow and excel. Next is a fun video that encapsulates a little bit of the leadership that we've started to do this year at TJ.
Thomas Jefferson Leadership Academy, take one. Good morning, TJ Tigers.
I want to be either a pastor or I want to be a fisherman.
We want our students to know that leadership means taking big risks, but also doing so with integrity.
I think I take initiative more and like do what I'm supposed to be told.
It's okay to fail. It's okay to try big things as long as we are doing it for the right reasons and in the right way. We teach that by instilling confidence through structured tasks and asking our kids to have each other's back through peer-to-peer encouragement.
Like the classroom is like a place where you can make mistakes and not always have to be perfect. It's a really great school.
So a special thank you to Cameron with the district office who helped us to put that together. And that just gives you a little taste of some of the ways that our students are leading, whether it's from holding the doors, greeting students, whether they're exercising that in their classroom by being a teacher leader with a learning, celebrating students. The group that was doing that little chant is part of a kindness committee in their class. So they're responsible when a student is out, they write them a note saying, hey, we missed you the other day. When they celebrate a student, they lead the class in introducing the student or the student's parent that's come to speak and doing a celebration at the end to thank them for their time. So some of our year-one wins, we've had a 9% increase in enrollment with our parent choice offering this year. We had updated branding and signage for the start of the school year to match our new focus and leadership model. We've really worked over the past year to build a common school language with our students and our staff and our families around the seven habits, which connects back to Franklin Covey in The Work of the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. There's a program called Leader in Me that we utilize within our morning meeting time where it teaches the habits to the students in a kid-friendly way, but it gives us that common school language. So when we say to a student, well, how could you have been proactive in that situation? They know what that means and we don't have to stop and explain. They've had lots of conversations about it already. We've also spent a lot of intentional time, we redid our mission last year with input from parents and staff and students. And so making sure that that stays relevant to our kids. So part of our morning announcements, having a mission moment where the students are tasked with a moment of reflection of how can you take initiative today with your learning? Or how can you make sure that you are having a servant leader mindset as you go about your day today? So just giving them little tidbits to keep that at the forefront of their mind. We created class mission statements. You'll see in the top corner, that's one of our second grade classes' mission statement. And that goes back to just the research that shows when you know your why, your what becomes more powerful and effective. And so our teachers sat down with their students when they did all of the classroom community building at the beginning of the year and talked about, we come to school for a reason. What's our purpose? What's our common goal? How can we work together to achieve that? And they developed mission statements with their kids. And then this particular class did little thumbprints to signify, and the students signed their names underneath. But we wanted the students to have some part within that to show a level of commitment. As you guys saw when you came in October, part of their morning meeting, they recite their mission. They have a student leader who helps to lead them through that morning meeting time where they talk about their habits and they reflect on what their goal is as a class. We also introduced after-school programs this year, and we've had 15% of our students participate in the first semester. And we've gotten great feedback from our families. It's been a great way to pull in community partnerships. We've provided soccer through Upstart Athletics, Spanish through Larson's Language Center, and then a bike club with a staff member leading, and then partnerships through Bike School Bentonville and Bentonville Moves Coalition. So those have been great. We got feedback from parents kind of mid-semester to ask, what are more clubs that you would like to see offered? What is the right duration that you'd like to see as far as weeks, timing? And so we're getting feedback so that we can plan for next semester.
Are they free?
They are not free, but we applied for a grant. And we'll hopefully find out by the end of this month if we received it because we want to provide more open access. So 15% of our students have partaken in them with the cost, but we would like to be able to reduce the cost and provide additional scholarships for it.
That's a really fun idea.
Yeah. Kudos to a couple of our program partners, like Upstart Athletics offered scholarships to some of our kids who we were able to offer to students who may not have been able to participate otherwise. And then our bike club, we charged a smaller fee, but more than what was needed for the overhead so that we could offer when we do it in the spring, additional scholarships. Additional things within year one, student leadership opportunities. This is a big core piece, is a part of TJ. All of our classrooms have classroom leadership roles that the students apply for. And that looks different if you're in kindergarten versus fourth grade. In kindergarten, it might be a conversation where they talk about, these are the different positions we have, kind of brainstorm what would be strengths you might need for this role, and they have a conversation with their teacher. But they still articulate, these are my strengths. This is why I think this would be a good fit for me. We had a parent that told me, my kiddo, as soon as they got in the car from Carline, said, I need paper and pencil and I need to write down all of my strengths and I need to explain why I should be the classroom sweeper. And she was so excited and she said she skipped her normal like TV time, snack after school because she wanted to sit at the kitchen table and write down all of her strengths. So it's really neat to see our students, they're little things, but our students are taking ownership and they're proud and they're excited to come to school because what they do has meaning and purpose. We had another little one that got sick in the middle of the night and told their parent while throwing up, I need you to tell my teacher to get a sub for my job. And so they really care about their roles and it really means a lot to them. And that's what we love, is we want them to invest in our school. We want them to know that their voice matters, what they do matters, and they make a difference. The other piece that we've added this year is our school-wide leadership positions. And we're rolling out more as the year goes on. Right now, about 20% of our students have a school-wide position. And those range from student leadership council, student ambassadors who meet with our counselor and kind of develop a welcome program to welcome new students who come to our campus, have lunch with them, help them make connections with new friends. We have a spirit squad who will help to bring the energy at the assembly, greet all the students and get them excited. A welcoming committee that greets our students at the bus lot because in the past, our student council has always greeted Carline, but we haven't had anyone to greet our bus students. So trying to include everyone in that. Library leaders, the next ones that we're rolling out are photography, assembly crew, different things like that. And we're pulling in community partners with that. So I actually visited with Cameron when he was at my campus recently and said, hey, when we start our photography club, will you come and speak with our kids? Because we want them to build connections to, yes, these are jobs in our school, but this is also what people do and they use their skills and their talents to make a positive impact in the real world. And starting now, let's think about, what are the skills and talents you have and how can you use them to make a difference? The other thing this year is hands-on experiences. We've tasked every grade level to be really intentional about thinking about the leadership experiences that they're offering to their kids. And so kindergarten in the spring, we'll be doing a partnership with our community workers. They'll meet with the Bentonville Fire Department, Bentonville Police, and get to have conversations with their kids about, how do you lead and serve within our community? Why is leadership important in your role? First grade met with Mayor Orman. You can't see in this picture, but if you zoom in, if you have it on your screens, Mayor Orman is mixed into all of those first graders on the library steps. And she met with them and just talked about how does she lead within our city? Why is leadership important? How does she lead in her daily life as a person and as a mom? Second grade is actually doing a partnership with First Western Bank in the spring. They're going to go and get to rotate through different positions at the bank, get to hear why is leadership important in the bank and why is it important for a teller as well as the CEO? Helping them to see leadership is an essential life skill regardless of whether you are the superintendent or the school board president, everyone needs to be a leader and be able to do the right thing, to be able to give back, to be able to use their strengths. So helping them to see that in a variety of ways. Fourth grade, we have an event coming up with Walmart as a partner where we're going to do a little bit of like a job expo. One of our parents is going to speak and do like an inspirational leader talk to our kids. And then we're going to invite our parents who work at Walmart or vendors to come and set up booths and tables. And our kids will get to walk through, ask them questions, and they'll get exposure to different career fields and possibilities for them. Service opportunities, this is a piece that has been a part of TJ, but we're looking to continue to grow and make this more of a tradition and a pillar for our school. We think that servant leadership is important and we want to model that for our students by giving them opportunities to serve. Right now, one that we have currently going on is our kindergarten jingle bell necklaces. Our kindergartners every year help to create jingle bell necklaces within their classroom. They work on counting and sorting and patterns. And then they sell them the week after Thanksgiving break for a dollar to other students in the school. And then we use all of those proceeds to go back and buy presents for a TJ family that's in need of support at Christmas time. And that's something that five-year-olds lead. And so it's really neat to help them start to think, like as a five-year-old, you're making a difference for a family at Christmas. So giving them those opportunities where they can serve and they can give back and they can see how good it feels when you live a life purposely, thinking through the lens of service and leadership. One thing that we're looking to do in the future with service is just continuing to partner with community partnerships and finding ways that we can branch out with that. Our Global Connections class, which is on the activity wheel, we rotated to the Leader Lab this year. And in that class, they talk about service. They talk to students about service projects. They have different canned food drives and things like that going on. But it goes beyond that, too, of when we talked about Veterans Day, they connected to the students, hey, did you know that tulips symbolize honor and appreciation and respect? We went out to the outdoor garden after learning about veterans and the students got to plant the bulbs in the garden. And we again reiterated that connection. And when they come in the spring, we'll connect it back to, this is a way of service so that we can reflect and we can remember what they've done for us. Our wildly important goals are things that we set as a grade level. Every grade level sets those. We have those posted in the hallway. And with that, our purpose is for students to see, goal setting is important. Things don't just happen by hoping and wishing. You have to have a goal. You have to have set targets. You have to have an end date. And you have to have what we call lead measures, things that you're going to intentionally put in place and do. You're not going to let slack because you're not going to meet your goal, you do. And so they regularly talk to their students about, this is what our wig is. This is what we're working to achieve. The students track their progress individually as well. And then the teachers in the hallway track the grade level progress so that the students can see as a grade level, we are making progress towards this goal. I was in a third grade classroom the other day and the teacher had just assessed on some math facts. Third grade has a fact fluency wig. And all of the students at her table had passed and had leveled up on one of their facts. And the teacher took 30 seconds, paused the class, everyone that was working in stations stopped, and she made an announcement and said, hey, this group has leveled up. They're going to now be working on X facts. The whole class stopped for 30 seconds and just celebrated. They clapped, they cheered, they congratulated the kids. And the pride on those students' faces, I know that now they are motivated to go practice their next set of facts because they accomplished a goal and they're all working together on that common piece so that they can achieve that. So we're building that out with our kids. The staff action teams that we've created are just to help further the progress with our model because as you know, there's a lot that goes into teaching. And so to add in a parent choice model, too, can be a lot. So we wanted to make sure that we intentionally embedded things in place for our staff to keep growing with our leadership focus. So within our staff meetings every other month, they break apart into staff action teams and we have one that's responsible for those school leadership roles, helping to think about what's the next one we're going to roll out? Who are the community partners we need to reach out to? Who's going to be the point person? How will students apply for the role? One that works on onboarding for new students that come in and haven't been a part of the first three months of conversations where we have a common language and the shared understanding, how will we catch them up to speed? New staff members, how will we train them and support them with coming on board? And so we've broken that apart so that we can continue to grow within our model as we roll this out. Where we're headed next, I've been having the pleasure of getting to work very closely with Leslie Wright. And we're working on a communication plan that we're going to launch in January to just continue to outstretch what we're doing and showcase what we're doing and make it visible to the community. Because again, I recognize that it can be hard to know, when you say leadership, what does that look like? What does that mean? So we're working closely together to kind of highlight those things and roll that out so that it is more clear to families. We're expanding our community partnerships, like I said, with the school leadership roles, inviting them in to meet with our students and showcase how they do that in real life and give our students tips. Our after-school programs will continue to build out. We're going to start in the spring a leader lunch series where we invite community leaders to come and speak with our students. We'll set up in the library and it'll be a smaller group setting. We'll have the tables decorated so that it feels like a special occasion. Our leaders are getting to eat with leaders. We'll have a community leader that speaks to them about leadership and then our students will have a chance to ask them questions. And we'll rotate throughout the semester which students get to go so that there's a variety, getting to attend with the goal of all students getting to attend over a course of a year. Creating additional hands-on experiences, this year we just tasked our teachers with one intentional leadership experience on top of your regularly scheduled field trips, but looking to find additional ways that we can make those connections and form those partnerships and have traditions that the students look forward to, knowing when I get to third grade, I get to go here and I get to learn about this. Increasing the service opportunities, we really want to empower our students to look at our school, look at our community, identify what are areas of need, how can we help? And one thing that we would love to start is Thomas Jefferson Leadership Academy Servant Leader Days, where our whole school community goes out into the community and serves. We think that would be a great way to stand on our mission of serve our community and show our students what it means to truly be service-minded, have time to reflect and talk about, you know, what a difference we made today and why is serving and giving back important? And then the last thing that we're doing is introducing leadership portfolios. Those will start next semester. That's where the students will have their own leadership binder that will accumulate over the years. That's why we call it a portfolio, where they'll be able to track their goals that they've set, both personally and academically. They'll be able to mark their progress. Anytime that they participate in a club or receive an award or an achievement, they can put that in. And it will be something that when we have a conference with parents, the teacher will do their part and share. But then we'd love for the student to have a few minutes at the end to be able to bring that up and say, Mom and Dad, I want to share with you, this is the way that I'm leading right now in my school. This is a goal that I've set. I've accomplished it and I'm so proud. Or I haven't accomplished it yet, but these are the lead measures I'm taking and this is when I'm going to get there. We think that will be very powerful and a great way to allow our students to showcase what they can do. I'd love to welcome any questions you have.
I was just going to say, as a proud TJ mom, that I'm so excited for this. And my son, I know, left Latcher, so he really didn't get to experience it, but now I have a kindergartner. So now I get to see it all unfold. So I'm very excited. So, thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Very nice presentation. So 36 new kids this year. Do you have a goal? Like you want to get so many new kids?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to add another 10% each year would be awesome. I know eventually we'll reach a point where we'll start to get tighter, but I think an additional 10% next year would be awesome to have 20% of my population as parent choice.
So when we were there earlier in the month, one of my favorite things was the kids taking us around. And that's a big deal for elementary school kids. You literally made them do it. It was awesome. There wasn't a lot of coaching. It was even, so I love that. I love the leadership model. And you addressed, you said something about this, as an ambassador for the district, which is kind of what our roles are. I want to be able to say, this is what sets TJ apart as a leader. Because I know all of our schools are training leaders, right? The goal. So what is like the statement that I can say as an ambassador of what sets TJ apart as a leadership academy?
I would say, going back to that very first slide, that educational environment that centers on integrity, initiative, and service and giving those students opportunities to live out leadership and those core values in personal and academic lives. Everything is going to come back to leadership in what we do. Whereas other campuses may touch on it here or there, everything, every conversation we have, both academic and personal, is going to tie back into leadership, those core principles, and really making them a well-rounded citizen and person.
I love it. Thank you so much for taking this on because I think it's needed for our kids to be leaders. So, thanks.
I was going to say, thank you. This always helps. I was having a conversation with kindergarten parents the other night and they're considering all the school choices, making a buzz out there. And so they were asking questions and this really does help kind of solidify for me and for us to help with that because there's still, like you said, there's, what is leadership? That's definitely something that, you know, it helps us when we're able to speak to it and build that confidence and help you get to your goals. So thank you so much for sharing. I think it was great.
Yeah. One of my favorite things is to meet with families who are interested. So please always feel free to share my contact information and say, reach out to Emily. I'm happy to give a tour and sit down with them, answer questions and show them our school. Yeah.
I would just add to that, that it's obvious that the things that you have in place and that you're going to have in place are very intentional in terms of what your goals are. And so thank you for the work doing this and in addition to doing the work that you do that has nothing to do with leadership.
Leadership Academy, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. And it's not just me. I have a great team, but thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Carlson. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Alyssa St. John. She is going to be educating us on the third grade promotion that was brought about by the Learns Act. So, Ms. St. John, thank you.
Thank you so much, President Faddis and Dr. Jones and members of the board. I am excited to share what you may have heard in the news recently and how it relates to us. And so third grade promotion is what they're calling it. Lots of people refer to it as retention, but it is a promotion policy. This is the slide. These are Desi's slides. So when these first two that you see come straight from the State Department, it talks about why that's there. And really, the law is to support struggling readers early on and not let it go until they're third and fourth grade. Although this is when it hits, but the idea behind it is to catch them in K1 and 2. It talks about what students will do, what families will do, being a partner in the education. And you know, we saw that go into effect for us when we put a homework policy in. go into effect for us when we put a homework policy in place. That's part of that partnering with parents so that they understand what we're doing every day with curriculum, what teachers will do, using screeners to identify students and doing the individual reading plans for them. And then what principals will do, which is assigning those quality staff to provide those interventions and to also make sure they're communicating with families. And then our, our part of it as a district is making sure that we're providing good interventions, that we're providing high-quality material for our teachers and staff to use. And then the co-ops and the ADE will also support that work. The response to at-risk students. So these are the things that we're required to do, explicit and systemic interventions we already have in place, which a lot of the things that you see on here are things that we've been doing for quite some time during RTI or our response to intervention. But this just puts it more in writing and makes sure that we've been doing individual reading plans for years and years. There's a little more emphasis on it now because it's shared with parents and they can access the Atlas portal to see those intervention plans as they're working. So it's not a stagnant copy. Once it goes into that system, parents can see it as teachers are putting new interventions in and looking to see what that progress is towards the goals. It is individualized instruction based on what they need. It's individualized in that it's meant for that one student, but it's also normally done in a group of anywhere from one to six normally for those small group interventions. We progress monitor frequently. The most a student goes without progress monitoring is four weeks, but usually it's a two-week rotation for progress monitoring. Ongoing communication with families, making sure our teachers get professional learning. We just came off of one of those. We have a Book Nook grant to provide some extra tutoring for our Tier 2 students. And we just came off of an hour training tonight that was for our certified staff, but also our classified staff who are going to help support that. And then well-thought-out individualized reading plans, which we have in place. These are the requirements from LEARN and it's based on that NAEP score. So that's what caused us to have this put into law. Any student who's at risk on just that one exam, we have to look at. So we know that that's one data point, but we also know there's more than one data point for each student. And so we're looking at the whole, but that one piece of data forces us to look at this number of kids to make sure. National, oh, your education, yeah, educational place. Yeah.
Our one test she's talking about is the Atlas.
Sorry about that. The NAEP is very random and you're chosen. I mean, we've probably had two schools every two years take the test and we never know who they're going to be. But our one data point is the Atlas assessment. Any student who's at risk on that are the students that we look at and those are the numbers that we'll see in just a minute. The IRPs, like I said before, the individual reading plan, that's an IRP, is shared with parents on the Atlas portal. It was also shared during parent-teacher conferences in October. I do want to take a minute to tell you how hard our teachers worked on that because we didn't get the data until 10 days before conferences. And within that 10 days' time, they had to process the data, look at the students and have a plan ready for parents. And they did it. And it was a lot of work. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands what kind of stress they were under to pull that off in a short amount of time. Students may also be eligible for literacy grants through the Department of Education. They usually release those names in January and then we send the letter that they send to us. We send to parents to say, you're eligible for a $500 grant. And it tells the parent how to access that. So that's outside of school and they can use that if they choose to.
The ones that are eligible are those that did not test on grade level.
Erin, we're good. Okay. So, no, okay.
So Desi notifies us of the list of students. We download, we send the letter to the parents. And then in the letter, it sends them back to Desi's website where they have a list of approved providers. We asked for data because we'd like to guide parents to effective providers. And they didn't have that data available yet because they've only done this for one year. But we hope they will get there so that we can see effectiveness of providers and then recommend the ones that are most effective. That's a really good question. We do really encourage parents, if they get that letter, take the opportunity. It's now $1,500 per student.
It's more now.
It started as 500. And so use that $1,500 to get your child some extra tutoring outside the school day. If they're behind, it oftentimes takes more time than we have in the school day.
And most of us are parents and you know how it is to work with your own student at home. So to have that money where you can pay someone else to work with your student, even though it might be online, would be a great way to utilize those funds.
Do the vendors do a discounted rate for those?
They, they contract.
That would get you?
They contract through the department. And so that was the reason why I think not a lot of people utilize the $500 because if they're charging $50 a session, you're going to get, you know, 10 sessions. But this more, more money is more session. So I think it'll be more viable for families to actually go through the process. So good cause exemptions are something that was also put into the Learns Act to say students who don't score at grade level will be retained except for, and then here's the list of the exceptions for that. And it's students who have had three years of instruction or less in English. It's students who have a disability in reading, so it would be in decoding, encoding or comprehension. And that's addressed in their IEP or their 504 plan. Students who have been retained in any grade level prior to third grade. Students who have previously been evaluated for, for special education and did not qualify, but they also have had to have the two years of documented reading interventions. And then you see some red notes in there just because there's some discrepancy and I wanted to be fully transparent. So students who consistently perform at grade level maybe scored low on that one test, but we have evidence to show that that's the only test they've scored low on, or they've only scored low on one or two, but their daily work shows that they're fine. That's not in the law, but it is in the assistance manual. Same with the, the law says that students who demonstrate that they're successful independent readers and can perform at or above grade level can go on. And again, I think those two are kind of synonymous. And then students who are identified with some other cause by the State Board of Education. They describe that as a traumatic event. I'm not really sure what that's going to entail, but every time they've talked about it, it's a traumatic event. Maybe someone passed away right before, you know. Right, right. So those are the good cause exemptions that we're looking at. And then our current data, and there is a mistake, so I'm going to point that out when we get there. It's a little typo, but it's a big because it's a number. So 22% of our, of our students received a letter in October that was discussed with their parents about not reading on grade level. Of those 326, 326 kids, 88 of them currently don't have a just cause exemption. That's 26% of the 326. Okay. Those kids may have a just cause exemption before we get to the end of the year. But at that moment, they were not documented as to why they hadn't been picked up in a school and been having those interventions since first grade for sure, some kindergarten. And then 12 of those students of the 88 do have classroom data that's on grade level right now that indicate they shouldn't have ever flagged on that test. So we'll keep an eye on them for sure. And they still have an IRP that has still been discussed with their parents. But in most cases, those IRPs would have said the student doesn't really need an intervention plan. And then they would have documents to show why they believe that to be true. And then seven of those students, probably more because I'm not sure that every principal marked them as new to our school. But that is a growing concern across the state is what about the, it's the students who move into your district that you can't show two years' worth of data for because you didn't have them? They're coming from another state, from homeschool, from private school, even from a school in Arkansas who doesn't have the documentation that we need. So that's currently under discussion right now. And then the last thing I will tell you is the programming. This is what happens for students who are promoted for one of those just causes or they're retained in third grade. So it's both groups of kids. So it's this, it's these 326 kids minus the ones who are actually on grade level. They will need 90 minutes of daily evidence-based literacy instruction. Right now they get between 110 and 120. So we're already meeting that standard. And then they have to be placed in a classroom with a teacher who meets one of those three criteria. So they have to have a value-added measure score in the top quartile or they have to have a highly effective teacher excellence and support rating, or they have to be a master professional educator. And we're working on that right now. Questions?
Board, this is just informational, so you can ask questions.
Is there, is there a cutoff date? Like if I'm in third grade and I don't meet the requirements to move forward, can those students do work throughout the summer to meet the requirements and then be promoted or?
No, not necessarily. There is some talk of summer programs. If a district decided to put a summer program in place to, to be one of the just cause exemptions, but that's not in the law right now or in the technical assistance manual.
The seven students who are new to the ventile school, is that new for this academic year or new for the past year?
For this year. Yeah. And to your point, we could have gotten in a second grader last year who was new to the district who maybe didn't have, we would have maybe put them in intervention in first grade. So now they're not going to, so there's, that number can be bigger. Yeah.
And how many times can they be not promoted once?
And the retention, I'm assuming that's done, that would be a retention. The just cause retention would be when done by us, not necessarily a parent starting a kid late or doing kindergarten twice or something like that. Like when we say retention, that's us saying, no, you have to stay back.
That is correct. Yes. I will research. There's one thing that you mentioned and I'm, there are, there is a kindergarten waiver that puts them back in kindergarten. So that one could be a little bit iffy, but.
Are there specific plans then for the ones who, who are retained? What happens then going forward? And then also for the ones who maybe are able to go on, is there anything that has to be looked at with those kids as well?
There's nothing going forward, like how do we track that data? But we would leave them in an intervention. Most of our students, that's why we've whittled those numbers down so much, is most of those kids were already in an intervention plan. It's already documented. So we'll continue to track them, but there's nothing that says anything past, just put them with these teachers. Does that answer your question? Okay.
And is there a difficulty or complexity to having enough teachers to meet that goal of?
Well, there could be. I think, I honestly, I think we're fine. I really believe in my heart of hearts, after looking at the data and watching what we have and, and the things that we have in place and the high-quality instructional material that we're using and the way that our teachers are on top of instruction and the way that we've been doing this without anybody telling us to for quite some time, that when we really get to the end of the year, I don't think that we're going to be looking at retaining very many students. And the ones that are promoted with just cause will have the teachers that they need. They're already there. I'm not worried.
I can say this, that the work, especially K through T, three teachers have to do in the classroom is incredible. This is additional work, but they have to be, it is a science and they have to be on and they have to maximize every moment of instruction. And they have to teach the right standards and they have to use the right curriculum and they have to engage every one of those kids. It is an incredible job. We saw some today. And they are on and they have to work so hard to make all of this happen. It is, there's an art to it. Not everyone can do it. And I would never, ever try to take this on for my own children. It is, they truly have to be gifted to be able to do this.
And remember that they're across content. So they're teaching to a high level in science, math and literacy every day.
Yeah.
Plus providing the interventions that are required.
How are the parents, were they receptive when they get this information?
So that's the interesting part because we always wait. You know, if a parent has questions or struggles or isn't happy, they'll contact one of us or the, one of the administrators will. And out of those 326 letters, I got zero phone calls.
Me too.
Which speaks to the level of instruction that our teachers provide and the way that they're able to talk to parents.
That's great. That is great. My question, though, the 90 minutes of evidence-based literacy, is that in the classroom, is that in small group? Is that both?
90 minutes, yes. So the 110 to 120 minutes is some whole group, mostly whole group, some small group. And that's daily. And that's using HQIM. So that's our high-quality instructional material. And the great thing about that adoption is that it also has interventions built into the curriculum. So although we use UFLY and Phonics for, for some of our neediest kids, there are also scaffolds built into the curriculum that can be used in small group also for these kids.
Board, any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up, our favorite part of the night, Dr. Shon Hauser with Budget and Finance.
Good evening, President Fattis, members of the board and Dr. Jones. We are a third of the way through our fiscal year already. And at the close of period four, if you're looking at all funds, we have a fund balance of 80.3 million. That's more than 16.7 million more than last year at this time. And that is because of the savings that we have transferred into the building fund for construction projects and new construction. So if you want to look just at our operating fund, our expenditures are greater than the prior year by 5.5 million. And of course, that's because of salary increases and also student growth. And then if you look at our revenues, that's up by 6.6 million. And that is because the two main drivers of our revenue are property values and student enrollment. And both of those numbers are up as well. Year-to-date, our expenditures exceed our revenues by 1.2 million. And if you follow the, the way our taxes come in, you know that that's going to reverse this month when our property tax fall, revenues come in. Our fund balance in our operating fund right now is at 41.0 million or 15.5%. So we're trending right where we expect to be. We are at 25.8% of our expenditure budget, 33% of the way through the year. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board, this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve the budget. I'll motion to approve. Motion by Tatum. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy. Okay. Any questions for Dr. Shon Hauser?
Any impact on the interest rate change that's happened over the last few weeks?
No. We've had experience, we have experienced great savings in our bond and our bonds in the past when we refinance those as interest rates fall. We have some of those right at 2%. We're not going to see, I don't, in the near future, those kind of rates again. So while it's, it's nice to watch that happen, that isn't going to impact us directly yet.
I had a question about the Fund 8, the breakfast. Are we getting decent reimbursement on that?
We get full reimbursement for the cost of the breakfast. Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Becky, will you call for the vote? I will. This is item 7C, approval of the budget. Tatum?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Funhauser. Joining us now is, I see Ms. Kelly Bortz is coming up to talk about our course catalogs. Dr. Jones, President Fattis and School Board. I have a slide that recaps most of the changes or all the changes for the junior high course catalog for the 26, 27 school year. We did not have any major changes.
We did not have any major changes. There were a few edits. We did not have any course additions or deletions for next year. Some of the career and technical education courses had name changes and course code changes. So you can see Survey of Business was changed to Introduction to Business. Robotics I is now Computer Science. Media Communications is Introduction to Digital Arts. So that will be reflected in the graphics that are in the course catalog and those course descriptions as well. Washington Junior High School, now that they will be an IB school beginning next year, a candidate school, that description was updated to include IB in their description and talking points or highlights for their school. There's also a document that we linked in their description that talks about, or identifies, the IB requirements and the courses that those IB requirements will be in at Washington Junior High. So it just outlines specifically, really, the one that would stand out is the design that's required, the 50 hours, where that's going to be embedded in different classes within the school. So that document is linked in there. Page 29, there were a lot of updates with the high school course catalog. So we always link that in there. So we updated that link. And then we updated the pathway graphic from the high school course catalog that is now reflected in the junior high course catalog. And we monitor updates with the high school changes and just continually update ours to reflect those changes as we go along. So mine is short and sweet. Any questions?
This is not an action item, Board, so y'all can ask any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Dr. Morrow?
Hi there. For the high school portion of this, he is going to pull up the book. We like to remind you every year that this is the best information we have available today. And we have ongoing changes in law and policy all the time. We had a really interesting meeting on Friday with the State Department of Education, and that will cause us to add one more little thing in here about testing, just to make rules clear. But we are always monitoring those changes that need to be made to communicate better with the public. Couple of things. Our cover this year is a photograph from the yearbook staff at Bentonville West. And that's a biology classroom over at Bentonville West. And then our second thing I want to make note of is that policy numbers throughout this book are kind of a moving target right now, because y'all know that we are shifting our policy numbers to match the state. And depending on whether or not you're in board docs or you're in diligent, we are trying to hit that moving target with you. So if it doesn't look right, it probably is just in the different year. So we're working to stay up to date on that. On page, what is going to be for, I think, in the little tiny Roman numerals, is our parent university schedule. So parent university happens on a Tuesday and a Thursday in January. We do it at Bentonville West and the same event at Bentonville High School on those two nights. We switch every year who gets the Tuesday night and who gets the Thursday night. You can see a draft of the schedule there. And it's a lot of opportunity for parents, no matter their grade level. We can host a sixth-grade family there, a third-grade family there. But mostly, eighth-grade families come there. You can also see some events, though, that are very specifically for students going into 11th grade. So lots of different opportunities. The one new thing we've added to that schedule for this year is a free ACT and SAT prep workshop that will be in person on those two nights. We're also going to run that workshop as a webinar in December. And so it will just introduce families to the free applications that we have for you to use and also some predictive data that we can share. So page six is where most of our changes happen this year, and we'll go to the real number six. Just a few more pages. And it's going to be the information about the real number six. Keep going. And a little further. Out of the Roman numerals, past the Roman numerals. I'm looking at the bottom numbers, on the bottom right-hand side. So we're headed to number six. Keep going. There you go. We're almost there. Okay, that's to page four, and now we're here. Okay. Concurrent enrollment. Anytime you give people a page number on this, too, see the page numbers at the top? He might be looking at those. So the digital copy has a page number, and then you've got those Roman numerals, and then you've got, sorry. So concurrent enrollment. We have had to adjust with all of the new rules you know about that came across from the Access Act. And if you go from page six here to page seven for me, Erin, and page eight, it really flows over. It's a four-page document in real life when it's not in this catalog. Let's go back to six again. And the first thing I want to highlight is that we are now limiting, we've simplified the list of classes that students can take. That's kind of right there in the middle of the page. It says concurrent course options. And the beauty of that is that our counselors and our students and our parents aren't overwhelmed with the entire MWAAC catalog. We've kind of focused them, and you'll see that again in a graphic in just a moment. So there is a specific concurrent course options list for most students. If you're getting the full associate degree, the world is bigger for you. The second thing I want to point out is on pages 13 and 14, Erin. We went to the honors and high honors section, and we made sure that to be an honors graduate, you are also a graduate with merit. The state has new merit and distinction designations, and that is tied to our accountability and how many points you get to be an A school or a B school or a C school. And so it was important that we tie honors and high honors to merit and distinction. And so we've clarified that to make sure that you've got the three AP classes, three IB classes, or the four college classes to meet merit and distinction. And we're going to go all the way to page 98, Erin. There's a big button underneath the blue seal on the bottom right. Bottom right in the blue seal, there's a button there that'll take you to the back. Oops. That button left of the seal, left of the seal, that one right there. And if you'll just scoot back a little, you're going to page 98. 98 is a graphic that shows those classes. Go to the right a little. Go to the right. We're going to let you borrow our glasses. That's 92, 94, 96, 98. Here we are. This is a table that shows concurrent credit course options. And so that's just a visual our counselors are really excited about that says, these are the English classes we recommend if you want to take something from MWAAC. These are the social studies classes. This is what aligns to state requirements. And so our counselors are super excited. We think this is going to help some families as they build plans. The last thing I'll tell you about concurrent, and this is over there in pages 13 and 14, and that's that concept that we've refined and we've said, you don't need to be taking your college classes all online. And so we've kind of let that get out of hand. We're realigning. And there are some options that some people will have some courses online, but in general, you wouldn't be taking classes online. And we don't want to accidentally do that to you. We don't want to accidentally, because it's easier to schedule, put you in an online class without your parent knowing it, because that's not for every student. So that had been a problem the last few years. It gave some families sticker shock. If they were taking four or five college classes in recent years, that was an extra $250 on their bill. And they'd call me, and they'd say, what happened to this? I thought these classes were going to be $100 apiece. And so we have pulled that back in, and we're excited about that. Finally, on some of those last pages, Erin, you're on 100. Go one more, I think. We want to remind people that these are sample plans. That eighth-grade process can be so overwhelming for families. There are sample plans here. We have many pages of more sample plans online. So we'd just like to remind people that they're there. The final thing we have for you tonight. Last year, we started with a pathway planning guide for you that helps eighth graders. This is this year's version of that, so you can see all of the new pathways. And so that's all we have for today. And that's all we have.
Awesome, Board. Any questions for Dr. Morrow?
Did you do the six, seven?
He did it over here under his breath.
It happened.
He did it. Bless.
I did have a, so I had received an email about a parent, from a parent, asking about the virtual class, because they were hearing some of it was going away. I'm assuming the best recommendation you have for someone would be to reach out to their kid's counselor. As far as class options that are available, like, the variety is there, but the online piece?
The online piece is limited. We're going to encourage people to take those classes on our campus or on the MWAAC campus. If you're getting a full associate degree, you're probably going to encounter some online classes on the way. And there's a more opportunity there for those students to do that. The assistant principal in charge of these early college enrollments and the assistant principal in charge of master scheduling, they can approve for a counselor to put somebody in an online course when it's necessary. So there will still be some online courses out there, especially for kids getting the full associate degree.
Okay. And do we foresee putting more MWAAC classes in our high school? Like, right now, we have the comp in algebra. Would we put more? Or will that stay?
So we have chemistry on our campuses. We are adding everything we can that we can get approval, that agreement with the college. Sometimes we're even going to other colleges that will give us approval and agreement to get what we need to meet people's needs. But the other thing we are going to do more of is you may have a student that starts their day at MWAAC at 7:15 and then comes to us after that. Or they end their day at MWAAC. They come with us on morning, and then they go there in the afternoon. We certainly don't ever want a student to get a full 60-hour college associate's degree, and they've never stepped foot on a college campus. That scares me to death, and we don't want that. We want them to have some classes with our teachers, some classes on that campus, and a few online if they have to.
All I have to say, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jeremy. You go.
I just wanted, back to the merit, the conversation. It's three AP classes, four college classes, and then something else?
Yes and no. Three AP, three IB, and four college. That's a little confusing, though, because right now, they've got us kind of in, with training wheels, and then it gets harder later. So those numbers change over time, and we're going to do a presentation about that next month.
We had to define all of that. One of the most important things to remind parents, while they may see a slimming down of courses, the law, and in multiple discussions with the Director of Higher Ed, he said accruing concurrent credit hours is not healthy. And it's not. And it can be financially damaging and remove some of their potential scholarship money when they leave. Good advisement is critical. Now, in the law, it says that's going to happen at college. The things that we're doing will help our counselors advise students. They need good advisement. If those concurrent credit classes are just taken for the hours and they're not leading anywhere, that's not good advisement. And so everything that you've done within the course catalog aligns with what we've been advised from higher ed. It's good counseling for kids.
It's been, I just can't say enough about people who have been involved in this, trying to hit some moving targets. We've got some really good people doing some great things.
Well, and I was going to say that my oldest started high school 10 years ago. And the dramatic change that this is visually and accessible to the families to understand it, to click on it, to see it, is just amazing. And even, I think I probably said it last year when you came, and you've improved this year. So that is, I don't know how it could have been improved, and it was. So I thank y'all for all the hard work, because now that there's moving targets with the state recommendations that we already were trying to do, and you've done this. This is super hard stuff. And I know you flip through it and go, what a cute little book. That was so much work to do that. So kudos.
I had one more question, or one question additionally. So I was actually today, and I was cruising around on the website thinking, because I had the hard copy that I had looked through. But I thought, okay, if I'm a parent and I want to find this online. So is the best way to find it, or can you explain that for folks who, you know, maybe don't have their hard copy anymore, and they want to make sure that they know how to access this? What's the best way?
If you'll go to our website with us, Erin. We go to menu, departments, academic services, secondary. And then right there, there are two places you can get to these. And of course, this one's not there yet, because we wanted to bring it here first. But the place I like best this time of year says course selection process. That's where we will have everything by mid-December for all these eighth-grade families. So course selection process will have the latest catalog there and all the things an eighth-grade family needs. The other button, of course, is the course catalog button. And the beauty of that button is you can see all the archived versions from the past.
And during that process, we can run a banner for the process with a direct link there.
Usually, it'll, I'm trying to remember what it said, if it said course selection, maybe.
One last quick question, just has to do with just general school culture in our high schools. Do we have an idea of the balance, especially for upper-class students, on what's a good amount that we want them in our actual high school versus maybe at Ignite or at MWAAC taking classes? Like, is there a handle on that? Does it matter? The kids are still plugged in, so?
Some of that is driven by your number of seats at Ignite. So we are maxing out Ignite with your number of seats of Ignite. So that's kind of a set number every year, depending on how many teachers we add there. The college is not set, but it's kind of like an economic market. They choose. And they have continued to choose more and more college classes over time. But it balances out. You know, people feared early on that AP would go away. People would stop using it. They would just use college, and that hasn't happened. AP has continued to rise, too. So it all balances out. I tell people to kind of triangulate. Take some AP, take some real college credit. You know, take a little bit of everything. Take some IB in there. Don't put all of your eggs in my basket.
Try to get more to, because we were talking about advisement, the counselors being able to give some good advice. Like, you want your kids in our buildings, going to homecoming, going, no one was going to the football games, plugging into clubs. So do we have kind of like a benchmark? Yes, I know you could go take this at MWAAC, but you've already got two other classes here. So maybe consider taking this, like, on campus for us.
Yeah. I think that's healthy, but I think we have so many unique student situations. It's really family and student-dependent. To say that they have all the opportunities in the world, that the selections that they can make are incredible. Looking at the sample schedules would be healthy. And we do encourage them, get plugged into a club. It may not be fine arts, athletics, all the things, but get plugged in somewhere.
Our research shows us that you need to be in two clubs. That is part of an advisory lesson early in the year where they try to document that and help make sure they're plugged in. You have less than 20 graduates a year right now that might could spend their whole day at MWAAC. Everyone else is on your campus at some point for half the day.
I would just, from anecdotal observations with all my kids and their friends, by the time they're at that point, they've already been so plugged in, they're still plugged in. Even when they're off campus, they're still back, because those are the ones that are achieving and going, and they're still there. So I haven't seen with any, and this is just my own observation, that it has been just, I'm dipping, and I'm out, and not coming back to campus. They're still doing stuff. Any more questions for Dr. Morrow, Board? Thank you, Dr. Morrow.
And Ms. Bortz, thank you.
Next, to talk about red light runners is Dr. Don Hoover. Dr. Hoover.
Well, thank you, President Fattis, and good evening to you and members of the board. And Dr. Jones, of course. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to update you on information regarding incidents involving motorists that illegally pass, stop school buses. We call them the red light runners. And this is through October of '25. I've asked Mr. Jason Salmon, our Director of Transportation, to join me up here. Arkansas law requires that motorists stop at least 30 feet from a school bus displaying flashing red lights and an extended stop arm. Failure to stop for a school bus in this situation poses a serious safety hazard for students that are getting on the bus and getting off the bus, as well as for the bus drivers. As the presentation includes an overview of state law, a description of the district's reporting and documentation process, a summary of data trends through October of '25. reporting and documentation process, a summary of data trends through October of '25, and an update on ongoing prevention and awareness measures, including a collaboration with local law enforcement. The incidents referenced in this presentation represent those that have been both documented by the district staff and reported to local law enforcement partners for follow-up. There's no action for the board tonight, this is information only. So I'm gonna skip over to this. Thank you, Erin. I'm gonna make sure, I think we have it all. Turn it on. Okay, good. As I just mentioned, the law requires all drivers on a two-lane and four-lane road with a center turn, or a road with a center turn lane to stop at least 30 feet away from the bus when the red lights are flashing and the stop arm is extended. Drivers cannot pass until the bus has finished loading or unloading and is moving again. In Arkansas, as you see, illegally passing a stopped school bus when flashing red lights are on is a serious offense, and there are different penalties that range from fines, possible jail time, driver's license suspension, and community service. Here's some graphics we wanted to make sure that you saw, and others who might be watching this. This is, you know, if you have a two-lane roadway, you can tell both cars should stop if the red lights are flashing. If you have a two-lane roadway with a center turning lane, all cars should stop 30 feet back if the red lights are flashing. If we have four lanes without a median, without separation, all cars should stop. And then there at the bottom, there is the caveat that if it's a divided highway with a 20-foot median, then only the cars that are going with the bus should stop. So that's, that may be something that people don't understand, that we may see in our videos, but that is something that's very important to point out. In some of this process, and I'll have Jason come up here in a second, our process at transportation starts with our driver. And as you can tell, some of the process goes, when the bus stops, we activate the eight-way lights 300 feet from the bus stop. Driver stops, opens the door, eight-way lights go, red, stop arm deployed. When the red light runner occurs, our driver hits the incident button on the copilot. Driver then, of course, fills out the report when they get back. We search the video, and we download that, that's reviewed, and then we email the report and video sent to corresponding PD. Over to the right is the red light runner report that's filled out by the driver. Something to point out, I want to make sure that you may have seen in the consent agenda, was a change in, make sure you understand the reporting. Turned in means something a bus driver turned in to the transportation office. Reported means we took it and sent it over to a local PD, okay? So Jason, if you'll jump up now, let's go through some of the data with them, or let's take it from here. Right behind me.
So, first of all, thank you for even having this conversation. Bringing awareness to this is not only going to help our district, it's going to help every district in Northwest Arkansas. So let's get into the fun stuff. So turned in and reported. You can see that there's a discrepancy between what is turned in to us and what we turn in to the actual police departments. Mr. Aaron, let me see if I got this. So, once you dig into it, you find that the PM, we have a lot more red light runners in the PM versus AM, and that surprises everybody. So let's dig in, and I'll show you just a little bit more. The first question that I get asked is why wouldn't you turn in every red light runner to a police department? Weather's number one. The sun's glaring, we cannot see a license plate. Fog, rain, you can see in the bottom picture that that camera is just completely covered in rain, we can't see anything. Second top reason is, there was no license plate, and you'd be surprised how many cars come through without a license plate. And then the third reason is just, it's a blurred image, we just couldn't make out anything. These are the top three buses that we had for August, September, and October, and you can see how many reports they had for each one. You picked up on that. August and September is the same buses, first, second, and third. October is switched. So why did it switch? You, Dr. Jones, Mr. My Good Friend, Mr. Vera, have been talking about this. We have more awareness. We also had police follow certain buses and start helping reduce red light runners very quickly on the spot. That helped dramatically. When you dig into it, these are the top places for this particular school bus, and the reason it says 199 and 130 is in parentheses, we started the school year in bus 130, we got our new buses in, it became 199. The reason it says Water Tower Road and not an intersection is, that's actually a student's address, so I did not put their address, I just gave the road that they live on.
That's where it's right in.
Correct. Yes. Yes. 221, August, September, October, same three locations for both months. For 143, it changed up. It was on 72, then it switched over, Mount Olive Road became a problem. And again, looking at October, those are specific addresses, not intersections, so I didn't list them. This is the school bus that I rode when I was a kid. It had two red flashing lights on top, two on the stop sign, and you see school bus is kind of lit up, it's a reflective sticker. That's what I grew up with. This is the new school bus. School bus is an entirely lit up LED sign. The stop sign is completely lit up. You can see both the school bus and red, and the stop sign five, six miles away, if you're in a straight stretch, easily. This is why I feel we have more red light runners in the PM versus AM, because AM, you can see them much better. When the sun's out, it's just a big vehicle on the road. This is something else that we've added to our top buses with most red light runners, is a four-foot extension. That four-foot extension, the pictures do not do it justice, it's lit up in LED, and it adds an additional four foot, and we've added them to our top buses, and again, that's why October changed. 143 saw a reduction because we added the stop arm to his bus. But thank you again for the conversation, for bringing awareness to this. Mr. Vera's doing a phenomenal job meeting with the police department, saying, hey, here's the latest. Just getting the word out there helps more than anything. What questions can we help answer?
No, I mean, thanks for bringing it. I mean, this is something I think we're all passionate about, doing everything we can. I mean, not, there's not a person in this room that wants to have a tragic situation involved with a car or bus, or anything with a student, or, you know, a parent. So thanks for bringing it. My message, if you come up with another idea that we need to support, just let us know, because we'll be here to drive it.
Do, do we have the data to show if there's actually a repeat of the same vehicle that is, that is run, or is, okay, sorry. Okay, I can do that. And then on the state laws, when you showed us on the, could we get back to that first slide real quick? I guess my first question is, how do they determine the fines being between 250, 1,000? Is that between first offense, okay?
Third.
And is it either/or of the four options there, or do they make combinations?
It could be one, it could be this is your warning, it's totally up to the judge at that time.
Okay. So there's not, there's not a set pattern, okay.
Any more questions, Board?
Steve, Steve did talk with the police departments, and tell us a little bit about the feedback you got from them. He was sharing the most frequently violated areas.
You bet. I was able to sit down and meet with both Bentonville and Centerton Chiefs of Police, and we went over the data that we were able to acquire, all the, the bus routes, the AMPM routes, and the specific targeted locations where those high violations occurred. And so, together, we, they assured me that they were assigning and have assigned their traffic units to follow each of those buses with the purpose of enforcing the law and cite those that violate the law. In fact, when I was sitting with Bentonville, the Sergeant of Traffic Division, and I had spoke to them previously before the meeting, but they'd already been following the buses and caught one as they, in the morning, as they passed the stop bus. So they're out there, and they're, you know, trying to catch all of those that are violating that law.
When you guys are having conversations with the police departments, what causes the offense? Are people on their phone? Are they in a hurry to get to work? Do we know what's causing it?
Yes, it's all distractions. They're just distracted.
It's, yeah, a number of all of it. Everybody's in a hurry, everybody's trying to get to where they want to go and not paying attention, and so, you know, the number of violations, to me, is unreal, because that's way too many, and so hopefully, with the police following the traffic units, it'll put a stop and a lower number to those people violating.
Just sparked my question, those were the top ones. Is there a discrepancy? Those were the massive ones, and everybody else is just coming down here?
Yes.
Really? Wow.
And I did reach out to both Bella Vista and Cave Springs Police departments, just to give them the data that we acquired. I told them, even though the numbers are low in their communities, but we still appreciate and ask for their continued support in keeping our students safe.
Whack their car.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Sharp to talk about policy changes.
Thank you, President Fattis, Dr. Jones, members of the board. We have just a few policies for updates and three new policies to introduce tonight. The first one for updates is 4.5 school choice policy. It was updated to align with the changes to DESI rules governing public school choice. The change was regarding the annual reporting, as well as they defined parents, and so there were some updates within the policy on the definition of parents. Policy 3.2 licensed personnel evaluation. This policy was updated to allow for acceptance of the state's evaluation system, the rotation within that system, which allows for an employee to be evaluated on a summative evaluation every four years. So this allows us to accept someone from another district within their rotation with the understanding that a principal can put an employee on a summative evaluation at any time. Policy 6.2 classified personnel evaluation. This policy is being updated to allow for a supervisor to use a district-approved tool in addition to the classified evaluation tool, if they choose to do so. We have several classified staff members that are identified as classified staff members that serve in an instructional role, so they may want to have a different tool in addition to the tool that we use. Policy 4.47 possession and use of personal electronic devices. It was updated to include the concurrent credit two-factor authentication process for students enrolled in endorsed concurrent credit courses. The next three policies, policy 3.5 licensed personnel use of artificial intelligence, licensed, or classified personnel use of artificial intelligence, policy 8.49, and policy 4.64 student use of artificial intelligence. All three of these are new policies. The policies were written based on ASBA policy, model policy with input from the AI committee. I want to go back and highlight policy 3.2 and policy 6.2. Those are personnel policies. Those have gone through the Personnel Policy Committee for both licensed and classified. Those have approved for those committees. If you approve those two policies tonight, they will go into effect for this contract year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board, this is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve the policy changes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Willie, second by Bill. Any questions for Ms. Sharp?
On the popular topic of the personal electronics, as I was reading it, it's like, you can use for MFA code, like temporarily use a cell phone or whatever to get your MFA code, and I don't know if this would fall in there, but I think it does, is I get feedback, at least in my own home, that the Chromebook is not sufficient for the N-WAC classes, so, but they're not being allowed to use their MacBooks on campus. It's high school specific, obviously. So is there a, I mean, one, is there a truth to that, but the other is, you know, is there an exception for that?
So I'm allowed, Dr. Morrell, to come up and share information about that. They do have procedures within the classroom for that purpose.
A high school principal can help them with that. We have, Mr. Nichols and I took a photo of about nine or 10 different kinds of devices that we issue alone. You cannot look around a room and know if we own the device or you own the device, and there are students to whom we have issued an iPad, or we have issued a PC, or we have issued a Chromebook, depending on some different courses they're in. So your principal can help a student with that, to be able to use that device they need for their M-WAC class. They absolutely should be able to do that. We've got some language that helps principals with that, so it's just a principal issue. I will tell you, there are times in a classroom that is not an M-WAC class when they need to be on that Chromebook because of the route that they're going into certain software.
And I just, I'm a big fan of staying on campus to do your stuff, but there was some feedback that in the library and then in the common spaces, there was a little bit of crackdown, which I, for obvious reasons, but just so you know where that's coming from, but.
Thank you.
I had a question about the, the rotation policy. So look, when I read it, it seems like if someone came on, that we would do, the district would do an evaluation following their first year of employment, and now, I guess it's saying you can accept, there was an evaluation done somewhere else, that you just accept that?
So we, we will, with, our employees are evaluated every year, and so what we are accepting is, if you have an employee that's coming from Rogers School District, that's within the state evaluation system. They may have 15 years of experience, they may move over to our district, they had a summative last year, so a full evaluation, and so we can let that evaluation stand and then put them on a non-provocationary year one, where we evaluate at least four components within the evaluation system. Sometimes a principal may evaluate more, but our policy was written that anybody knew, no matter their experience, no matter where they were coming from, had a summative when they first came into the district. So this allows us to accept those that are coming in from an Arkansas public school or charter school with their current evaluation rotation. If the principal chooses to do so, they may choose to keep them on a summative.
Okay. And then my next question, the AI policy, so you rolled this, and we had a committee that reviewed everything and kind of recommended it, and?
Yes.
Board, any more questions from Ms. Sharp? Carrie Nun, Becky, will you call for the vote?
I will. This is Item 7F, approval of the policy changes as presented.
Tatum?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Rachel?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
Okay, that brings us to comments from the board. Tatum, I'll start with you. Anything to say?
I know I always say no comment, but I will say I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Jeremy?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Becky?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that were brought up at the very beginning when we were honoring Alyssa and our careers and technical department, and it really was just very exciting to walk through some classrooms last week and see what is going on. We hear sometimes about things going on off our campus in terms of Ignite and internships, but being in those classrooms and hearing kids say, when you ask them, hey, what are you, what are you planning on doing? And some of them said, oh, I want to go to this trade school, or I want to do this, or I want to, I want to be, you know, and they had all these different things, and so it's really exciting to know that all of those opportunities are out there. In addition, I would like to say what an, what an honor to witness the signing of the new partnership with, with Pitt State, and knowing that 10 kids per year have an opportunity to receive scholarships to go there, and just, I'm very grateful for that partnership and thankful to all the people who, who've worked so hard and had a role in that.
Awesome. Willie?
Nothing tonight.
Bill?
Lots of accolades to the musicians around the district on two fronts. Number one, just the junior high and high school, the regionals. I know our district placed very, very high with, with the number of students, and just want to, again, just acknowledge those phenomenal teachers at all levels, at the, at the elementary, junior high, and high school level on that front, and then BHS making finals at the, at the national scale, at the- And then BHS making finals at the, at the national scale at the Bands of America on Saturday, and they placed 12th overall in the whole country. But what's interesting for anybody who follows bands is the, the clips that went viral were all BHS from all of our soloists from about that. So it was really fun to see that and just, again, acknowledge those students, teachers, and parents that sacrificed to guide everybody, to get everybody there.
Rachel?
No comment.
Dr. Jones, I know you have something to talk about.
Well, I think it was covered.
Okay.
I think it covered it, so we're good.
Okay. I have no comments tonight. So at this moment, this body is going to retire into executive session to consider matters of personnel. We will reconvene in public session following executive session to present and vote on any action arrived yet in private.
Okay, welcome back. Board, I will entertain a motion to approve personnel packet we discussed in executive session.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Willie. Second by Tatum. Becky, will you call for the vote?
I will. This is approval of the items discussed in personnel.
Tatum?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Rachel? Motion, Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. A motion to adjourn? Motion by Jeremy. Second by Rachel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.